Are we recording? Is anyone recording? I don't know why. I don't know why. Yeah, I probably should. Okay, there we go. Please, listen. Previous meetings, we have none. Audience participation? I don't see any.
That's enough, no.
Just, just to be clear, Dirt Road's not happening tonight.
I know that, and that's my question. Can we put it on agenda for two weeks from tonight?
No, I'm not putting it on agenda until we have a town administrator who has settled in. And that's not the first thing I want to hit him with. It's just not a top priority for us right now.
So you're gonna let it fall?
I'm gonna let it wait because we have a lot of very important things. Um, that when we hire a town administrator, which is probably not going to be in two weeks. I want them to get a little oriented, you know, orientated to the job before we.
Okay, so I can count on it not coming up the next three weeks.
Correct. Take a vacation.
Yeah, thank you, I will.
Alright, uh, department reports, calm down, Dave. Highway, you're our only one.
You're your own department. There shouldn't be more of them.
There should be.
You just want to be first.
That's a valid point.
Before Dave gives his report, would it be appropriate to ask for a moment of silence?
Yes.
For the passing of Sumner Robbins?
Remind me again how old Sumner was.
He was born in nineteen twenty-five. He was very short of his ninety-ninth birthday.
Yeah. Absolutely, that was impressive. Um, so yeah, a moment of silence for the passing of Sumner Robbins, who was a lifelong resident. Did Sumner have the golden cane?
Yeah.
Yeah. He did, so that will be passed on now. Do we know who has the golden cane next?
No.
That's a market question.
Yeah.
You like Mrs. Bean or, or Mrs. Peace, they're in their mid-nineties.
Is there like a, do we do a celebration for that? Do we do, we have like some sort of ceremony? Okay. Dave, what do you have for us?
Let's see, um, I received all the letters except from the select board.
We have our assigned in here tonight.
Awesome. Um, George. Thursday, May twenty-third, ten to twelve AM. Agenda for the advisory committee meeting, resident, Dirt Roads.
Wow, this is you, George.
What, I'm trying to enter all of that, what day?
Twenty-third.
Where?
Here.
Here?
Time?
Here.
Right here in this very room.
Okay, ten to twelve, couldn't hear it.
Ten, ten to twelve?
Yes. And you can also go online and do the Zoom too. What's up, girl?
Is there gonna be refreshments served?
Um, yeah, I'm going down to Bruland and grab some water.
No, both of these is Murphy's, Mike, you know it right.
Oh yeah, that's a good stuff.
So yeah, that's, um, alright, there's some stuff on here. Um, that are, won't be here, but. Some updates on Fossil O'Neil. Um, there'll be here, the deliverables will be June thirtieth, but pretty much everything's at least, at least by those of it ninety percent done.
Okay.
So I'll refer.
So that meeting is gonna just catch residents up to?
Yes.
Okay, where can we share this information so that people are aware?
Um, she is going to put out a Zoom. Already, it's already out.
It's out, where did it get sent out?
Matter of fact, you can have a copy. Or I can give it to Joanne.
Okay, so it looks like, so there's a Zoom meeting, but how does it, how will this get out to people? We, we should put it on the website.
Mary.
Mary, we'll put it out, we'll put it on the website.
Yeah.
Um.
We can post it on the bulletin board.
So out there, do we want to do? Um. A reverse nine-one-one for something like this, or do we not want to?
Email sign emergency.
Not emergency, we don't do a reverse nine-one-one. Okay, um, so I guess the best way to get it out is. Newspaper and Facebook.
Yeah.
And this is the?
And the website.
Right.
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve.
Public hearing.
And we can do on TJ, can you get it on the board?
The board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll play it apart here.
Yeah, so soon we'll have our Supa sign.
Oh really?
So we can be putting on that, but until then, yeah, we'll put it out there. Okay, cool, thank you.
Yep, um. That's. Pretty much it. There's, oh. So, one of the things that they did, they did a, um, two culvert pipes in town, alright, the one over on Shepherd Road.
Yeah.
Down the end almost, it's about a four or five gallon ice pipe. And the other one is over on Gibbs Road. First set of pipes off of twenty-three, alright? I'm, I'm glad you guys are all sitting down.
Oh gosh.
Okay, the one, the one on Gibbs, alright? They're gonna turn, they're going to re, this is just a price. About pretty much could be higher or lower, alright? They're gonna do a, um, a box culvert, alright, pull them out, put a box forward in it. And, you ready for the price? One point one-six million.
Is that all?
That's it. Next one, Justin paid out of his retirement, because I know how much he makes. This one here is.
Couldn't live on what I make.
Uh, this is one that's on Shepherd Road, this is, um. Uh, one point four-three million.
This is for the culvert?
Yeah. To replace that and put a, um, box culvert in. So.
So, what are your thoughts for this? Like, how do we fund? Something like this?
Grants, that's the only way you're gonna be able to do it.
So this is our first step in looking for grants, is getting?
Oh, this is, this is just the preliminary of the pricing for it.
Okay.
So next year we have a pile for grants.
Okay.
Um. DER. Is probably, yeah, DER is part of, is the worst one to apply for.
Okay.
Yeah, you need an engineering degree to fill out everything there is to put into it. There are questions that you don't even want to answer.
Okay.
On there. Um. But that's that, so.
Is that something that might be worth contracting out?
Oh yeah, oh definitely.
A grant for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Let's see. That, that. Oh yeah, my garage door broke today.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Didn't we, no, was the garage, shall we fix the fire department?
No.
We couldn't, no one was in there.
We knew, yeah, we got new ones on there.
No, I, I had a brand new one at Sullivan.
Oh, this is the, here, okay.
Yeah, the spring broke on it.
Okay.
So. Um. We'll install, we'll install overhead doors. Fire, or red.
Are they old?
Years ago.
So there's no warranty?
They don't warranty on.
Okay.
So they're coming up hopefully next week to repair it. The new panel on it, new spring and all that stuff. Um. I do have, oh, let's see here, um. So. Since I had a few minutes prepared for this and one later on. Um. I wrote some things out, you know, specific things, what needs to be done for roads and all that stuff, or overall, general.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I wrote down drainage, culvert maintenance, road maintenance, we're going through vast area. Okay. Drainage. Culvert maintenance. Road maintenance, railroad roads, tree canopy, vehicle maintenance.
Yeah.
Um. Steps to get there. And everybody all knows there's only three hundred and sixty-five days a year, right? Um, it only takes one or two storms to throw everything. Off, like it went, like the storm we just had, you know, I had plans to do other stuff, but now I got. Some roads I gotta repair real quick and all that stuff, also trying to get everything ready for. Next, for twenty-third, twenty-fourth. So anyway. Um, the funding. We have funding, not a lot of it, alright, grants. We are not guaranteed grant every time we apply for a grant. Right? Um, I wish we were, it'd be nice. Um. Now, if. When the water department starts putting their stuff into the system for messwork spans and all that. I noticed that they have like three or four of them in there, I've got two. Um. We are just fighting against each other. You know, for the grant, so whoever they think is better ideally get, they'll get the grant, it will be just, you know. Won't get it that year, could get it next year, it, don't really know. Um. Another thing that I, I thought of, and I know there's a, a, another town or so that. It's thinking about doing it, is road bond. Um. It's to pick, you know, three or four roads. And have them redone, you know, that way you can, you can sit and. Take your Jeff and Ninety money and start working on more and more on the railroad roads to get them up to par.
Now, didn't we just pay off a road bond? That Rainey had done?
I'm not sure.
If that's wrong, are you crazy? No one else is remembering? I thought we took out a road bond with Rainey and then paid it off.
Was that for, um. Cook Road?
Yeah, I don't know what road.
Several roads in the center of town here somewhere, so they did it all at one wagon.
Oh, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that was, I don't think it was a bond, I think he said with, um, Jeff and Mindy, I think.
Was it really? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't a bond? Okay, maybe he talked about doing a bond?
He might have. Yeah. Um. Oh, well, and. A highway stabilization fund, right? Some towns are doing this, some towns aren't, you know, depending what type of funding they have, but. I believe we, we, we should start one in this town. And if you have, if there's money free cash, you can just transfer it to this fund, and it's only for, it could be for all your emergencies. Or for big, huge projects, you know. Um, I went to the town of Beckett's annual meeting because my wife had to go. And, um. They're a little. They're a little more funny than we, you know, and they, and they put two hundred and forty into it. I know, I know, we won't be able to do that, you know, but something is nothing but future, you know?
Yeah.
Um. If we, if we were, if we were to get a grant. And. It's either redo all the work for the prep, it's like going to a job site, you know, you're the first people there, you get to the job site, you gotta prep everything that's there. Um, that's what we do, alright, we try to do as much as we can before. The contractor comes in. Or we start hiring parts of it out, alright, um. We started hiring and out, we started, you know, losing funds. But, for. Us doing it, it takes a little bit longer. We do, for instance, Gordo, have you seen Gordo yet?
Yeah.
Have a look.
Okay.
Have you seen it lately?
Yeah.
Okay.
I took a ride down after you did it.
Oh, did you?
So you, you did get Dick's complimentary email?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so, but yeah, um. Stuff like that. Um. And I know that most of these items are. Not feasible to happen, you know, so it's something we have to pick and choose on certain things, you know? So which one's more of a priority than the next one?
Yeah.
But. Now that's it. Okay.
Have you ever heard from that guy on Cabo Mountain Road?
Which guy?
There were, I don't know, somebody, oh.
When you're done.
Oh, no, I, I, I thought you knew something.
No, 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 sorry, I just wanted to speak after your, don't.
Oh, oh. Well, John.
I don't know, someone, uh, put an email in about. Something about Cabo Mountain Road, and I emailed them back and explained to them it's not really a town road.
Yeah.
It's a state road.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was wondering if he ever got back to you. No, no. I forget his name, I'm sorry, I'm old.
Okay, I'm with you.
When did that become a state road?
The entire road is a state?
When did that become a state road, Cabo?
All in the game.
They just all counted.
It's, um, DL, DL. DCAM.
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 DCAM has it now, DCAM, um.
Department of Conservation Management, well, it sounds good.
Sounds, sounds good.
Yeah, probably.
Um, yeah, they took it after nine eleven.
Really?
And that was the whole thing that we were.
Fighting.
Law, I think they took it at the dissolving of the Handed County. And, uh, it went to, and then that's why we had no say when it sprung through water, told you.
So that's who we were, um. Requesting.
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, I did.
So that's okay, it's a very long, confusing story.
My plans are just to go down and patch it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Okay. For now, yeah, I mean, what else can we do?
Exactly, we don't want to put their money into it. Um. We can just discuss this later today.
Yeah, okay, did you ever, I'll, I'll ask you that later, no worries, okay.
Okay, Joanne?
Um, I want to bug you about the flags again, sorry.
I called, I called them today, they're still working on, on the, uh, the phone.
The imports from China or what?
Well, it's, it's a company down there, and you know, they think it's backed up.
Are you talking about the big ones or the small ones for the?
The big holes.
The small, the ones that, on the poles, he's maxed.
The small one.
Yeah, we're waiting for the lift to be repaired.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
She's talking about the small ones for the cemetery.
On the flags.
No, you're talking about the ones that go on the.
No, not the cemetery, the ones that go up on the pole, he's, he needs his lift.
Yeah.
Dougie does not want to climb up on a ladder anymore, I don't blame him.
Okay.
Um, so he's got a lift that he's having repaired to put him back up, and I'm hoping they get up before Memorial Day.
That's what I told him, so.
And the second thing is, um. He's gonna be picking, Highway's gonna be picking up that playhouse for the library.
Oh, yay, okay.
Leaving it, Nicole asked to have it stored behind the library.
Fantastic.
In a little bit until they get around to building it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave. Alright, so we have, um, a resignation letter from, um, John Van Henigan, who was our electric wiring inspector. Um. Effective.
Say when it's effective?
August sometime, maybe. Uh.
It says August.
No.
In August, okay, so effective August.
On training, he's gonna get this guy up, you know, it's nice that he's doing that.
So yeah, he's recommending, um, Nate Walzak, who is here. Um, Nate, you're welcome to come on up if you want to join us.
I don't have much to say. If I do, I'll log him up anyways.
Okay, that's fine, um. As interested in becoming a, in assistant wiring inspector and eventually taking your place, taking his place. Um, so I make a motion to approve the resignation of, uh, John Van Henigan as wiring electric inspector. Um, yes, effective August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. So then we have a letter of interest from Nathan Walzak, uh, Beachville Road resident. Um. So. You hold, uh, required electrical licenses, um, to be an electrical inspector at stake. So Nate, he's gonna sort of take you under his wing and help you, um, with the specifics of the position before, have you done any, um. Inspector work before?
Yeah, I'm also the inspector in Montgomery.
Okay, great, so you, and do they use permanent eye over there?
They're gonna move to it, they haven't, yeah.
Okay.
John's gonna train him in that.
So you'll get some training, you'll be ahead of him.
Yeah, so I'll be good too, for sure.
Okay, excellent. Alright. Um. So we don't have to vote on this, alright, so the motion is to appoint, um, Nathan Walzak as assistant electrical inspector for the term. I mean, thirteen, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you related to Ed?
Nope. Although my uncle is up past you. Rich.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, and Elmo Electrical, okay, I see all that. Cool, oh, and you work on the water department in Westville too, so.
Yep.
Has our water department reached out to you for, at any point?
Maybe through Mike here.
Okay, yeah, because, okay, Mike works down in Westville too. Cool, any interest in joining the water department?
Give me an email, and you must, I will, I'll just call you. And stay there.
Well, I mean, if there's people, Nate, if you ever had any interest in joining the, um, water department, I don't think there's any positions right now, um, but just a thought.
Yeah.
Um.
For sure.
Right in town. Cool, alright. Um, motion to appoint, so Jennifer Gerard to risk management for the term of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, is there a second? Any discussion? Um, so Jennifer's kind enough to volunteer to do this for us, to help us collect some data. Um, so, uh, last week you talked to us about some of the money that we're missing out of by not, um, doing the. All the courses we're supposed to be doing through Maya, um. And so, you volunteered to do that, we can collect the data of how many hours it takes you, and then how much money you were able to recoup, and then hopefully look at doing like a stipend position. Um, I did reach out, reach out to Pioneer Valley just to ask if there was anything like that, um. He hadn't heard of anything, but thought that it would be a great idea to start something, so they're interested in the data too for us and for other towns, so. We appreciate it. Um, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. I thought we did John Carrington, did we just not sign the letter?
Good job.
We, we already appointed them.
No.
No.
We didn't. We did, we did, sorry, you don't need a motion, just sign it.
Just sign it.
The paperwork fell through the cracks because they brought up at a meeting before the paperwork was done, which is why paperwork needs to be done ahead of time.
Alright, so if it's in here, we signed it, it's in here.
It's in there.
Yeah. So he loves it.
Sorry.
Alright, that's okay, motion to appoint Dick Gates to Conservation Commission for July first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-seven.
Second.
Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Doug Emo to Watson Park groundskeeper for July first, twenty-four, June thirty, twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion to appoint Joe Henning, Veterans Agent, July first, twenty-four to June twenty, twenty-five, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Margaret McCusky to register voters for July first, twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-seven. Discussion, or sorry, second?
Second.
Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
I, motion to appoint Justin Lefrance to Recreation Committee for the term July first, twenty twenty-five to forever, I'm just kidding, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight?
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Jennifer DuVial as Animal Control Officer for the term July first, twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint, uh, Jason Ford as Langford Inspector for the term July first, twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, discussion, on favor?
Aye.
I, I just brought up to him, does anyone else notice all the cars on Main Street and that house? You know the house?
What?
Okay, you know the house we had cleaned up?
Yeah, just before.
Just before that.
There was five cars.
If we're driving down the hill, there's like five cars.
Next to the brick house.
But I don't know if it's on this property or the property.
He used to work for the town, they're his cars.
Okay, so I brought that up to Jason to take a look, because I think, do we have a bylaw, Mary, about?
One car.
You can't have a bunch of cars, old cars in your place.
Unregistered.
Unregistered, no, you need one.
Okay, so, hopefully we'll get some information on that.
Two families?
No.
When Mullins had it.
It was one, the one.
Same house.
Yeah, but they put that addition.
Not the same house.
It's not that much.
Anderson's all house. It's, if you're looking by the brick wall, and they're stuck in the woods behind it where it's.
So it's the road off of Caleb, off of Caleb?
No, it's, it's on Main Street.
Oh.
I don't.
Yeah.
It's the one with four of the Mennonites housed there, just front of, right, but they're in the back, if you look. There's five or so.
Oh, the Mullins did, they're a long time ago.
Oh, that one, I'm, I'm looking at it.
I'll get the other one.
Yeah, the one that Michael Jeffrey did.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Alright, so hopefully we'll hear, because it's, that doesn't look it.
Well. Okay, second, rotation. All in favor?
John, oh, we said all in favor, because John Pfeifer, Conservation Commission, July first, twenty-four, June thirtieth, twenty-seven.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Uh, Joanne Martin, absolutely not, that's on aging, July first, twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-seven.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, warrant number twenty-two payroll, uh, second?
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Jennifer Gerard, ele- election warden, July first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-five.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright. Whew, new business, expenditure report. Do we have one digitally, Joanne?
No, we don't have a new one.
Okay. Okay, well, that's till next week. On favor?
Never know if it's gonna come in again, so I just put it there.
Maggie's back for a visit. Um, so we had the letter of supports, we got those, um, from Voldega for Stratford Masquerade as well as Marx. And then the Blanford, we already signed ours, fantastic. Um, the Supa letter came in, I said yes to both of those, Joanne, we do still want it, and. Um, the same design that we had chosen before, I don't think there's any changes, and the same location, Mary, you were fine with that.
I have a link in an email that I can answer those questions, and then it'll move forward, I don't understand about. If it's paid for, I don't understand any of that, but.
That's coming out of ARPA, right?
Um, Chris got a separate grant for that.
Oh, he did, okay.
So I'm sure Chris is taking care of it, but at least it's moving forward now.
Okay, while, which is sitting, okay, good, it'll be just in time for the new patio. Perfect. Um, and then I see update letter, opioid litigation, did we sign that?
I don't know what that was.
There's just many couple of letters, um, oh, this is just the. This is as, as we joined sort of towns, remember, this is a thing, we got like three hundred dollars for or something?
Yeah.
Um. Says municipalities threaten to come up, our parties to national litigation involving opioid manufacturers and distributors, and are currently receiving allocations of settlement funds based upon. Negotiated settlements arising from such litigation. As you are aware, the National Consortium of Attorneys Representing Players in this litigation is seeking authority to amend existing litigation complaints to add additional counts against new defendants based upon the rules of pharmacy benefit managers and opioid prices. And their alleged failure to undertake their duties of monitoring opioid prescription practices. Authorizing such amendment would permit cities and towns to participate in that expected litigation and possible benefit from settlements or judgments with respect to those additional defendants. Whether to authorize the amendments is a policy decision for the city or town, however, the decision must be communicated to the consortium on or before May seventeenth. So we, do we want to, um. Uh, approve that amendment? So let's hold on, let me make a motion. A motion to approve. The amendment, uh, to permit C, uh, Blanford to participate in expanded litigation and possibly. To expand the litigation in the matter of the opioid litigation.
Second.
Um, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Joanne, could you respond to this, Mark Rich, and just let them know that we had that, made that motion? Do you mind?
No.
Okay, um, and just say, yeah, Langford.
Okay.
Dude, um. The small flags, do we know if that's happening for Memorial Day? Is there anything we need to do about that?
Doug gets usually right on top of that.
Okay.
So I also got the barrels, the new barrels for Watson Park.
Oh.
Uh, Linda, remember I was saying I was really upset because it was way too much money, it was like seven or eight hundred dollars, and then they wanted another two hundred and sixty dollars to ship it. And I just was sick and didn't do anything, Linda came in and she and I sat down and looked at. Forgot where we looked. And we found one for three hundred dollars that she's very happy with.
Oh, good, and it came in, did we ever do the second dog station, the dog poop bag station?
That was a few years ago, yeah.
And we did, and that, and that, they're all set, it looks like they're all empty.
Oh.
Maybe we need to mail happy poop bags.
No one's picking up poop.
Pick up the poop, um, I asked, I'll send a message now.
Alright.
I asked Jeff, because I think we had left it with, um, Mike about the. Stairs on the gazebo, so Jeff's gonna take care of that now, in terms of getting someone, getting some price list.
Six in the gazebo stairs with a rail.
Okay.
I think George could probably do it for free.
There you go, not Nate George. Um.
Question?
Yes, Dave.
Oh.
I believe it was a grant that just came out, I think I forwarded to you, to you or to Joanne about eighty-eight grand came out through the Fed.
Okay.
For that kinda stuff. Uh, I, I, I'll write emails.
Okay, I'll see if there's anything. Of course, we have no one to apply for a grant right now, but, um. Thank you, Dave.
Well, if you have to apply for a grant, then I'll go to time and get it.
That's true, that's true, okay, so, um, I don't think we even in other new business, oh, no, we gotta talk about the budget, what am I thinking? It's not on here. Um. We wanted to talk about where we are at with the budget, but we are not having a meeting with finance, because it's not, we don't have a posted meeting of finance. So we just kinda wanted to check in, I know I got an email from Christopher that, um, they had received what they needed from you guys, Dave and Christopher, and they were plugging in the numbers that were missing. And he was looking for a little bit more information, Mary, did you get that from Christopher, if he was looking for some information?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I sent it back to him. Um. We also understand from David that the referendum question should not go on the ballot without a public hearing for it.
Okay.
But I, I have no other information about that from KP Law.
Who with the public hearing, is this a planning board, or is it the referendum for?
I don't know, we'd have to think about that, or maybe.
Is that, is that something we could do at the mini-town meeting?
I don't know if it's time to post it.
No, not really, you don't wanna, don't wanna mix your apples and oranges.
So we are gonna have another special town meeting to do the fire department situation anyway, so we can just hold it for that.
Yeah, and, and also, I, it was not, did you see the draft or the one?
Um, I don't think I've looked at the draft yet, I think, I think I just got it before I came, and it was. Yeah, I haven't looked at it yet.
Think about putting the, a resolution regarding the non-binding referendum on the town warrant, or do you wanna wait? Or do you wanna, you can say, I don't know if we can do this or not, but do you wanna say, uh, would the town like to have this on a ballot in the future? Don't wanna have a special election because it's gonna be expensive.
Are you talking for the, um?
The referendum question.
For the highway?
No, for the, um.
Excellent, that's what I mean, excellent.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, now that makes sense, sorry, I didn't know you were talking about that, okay, so we're talking about, um, did you reach out to Mark, do you want me to reach out to Mark and ask him?
Well, I sent him a copy, and I haven't heard anything, and the last of my question was to Mike, and he hadn't heard anything either.
Okay.
So I'm, I don't know, I sent, I sent Christopher a copy of the referendum.
Okay.
And it's, it's, in its entirety, it's too long to put on the ballot.
Okay.
But it could go as a resolution maybe. See what you wanna do about it.
So, put it on or hold to special?
Yeah.
And do we need a, a hearing? That sounds like jolly old time.
Being here tonight, um, cuz I have another, we have another question about the decision of Article twenty on the twenty twenty annual town meeting, which was, um, to allow the town to vote to borrow up to fifty thousand dollars for fiber optic drop construction. And.
We wanna rescind it?
I, I, I don't know why, but we need to put the verbiage of that article into Article seventeen on the town warrant.
Why, why are we rescinding it?
I don't know.
So where did that article come from?
It's Article seventeen, it's on the bottom of page two.
Where did it come from, though?
Um.
And it comes from what?
What? Dave and Christopher, something to do with the budget.
So we'll have to ask Dave and Christopher. Okay.
Does it, with, with something that's four years down the road with the?
Okay, I'm sure there's a reason, but we'll, okay, we'll double check and see what that, and we'll go over the warrant next. I know, I hate to pull that, we're gonna go over the warrant before the mini-town meeting, right? At the mini-town meeting, we'll.
Mini-town meeting, it's Monday.
It's Monday.
I thought it was the thirtieth.
No, it's the twentieth.
Twenty.
But before the mini-town meeting opens at seven, we'll go over the warrant with Dave and Finance Committee. So will you make sure that our next select board meeting is posted with Finance as a shared meeting? Finance, I'm assuming you wanna be all of you here, yeah, next Monday.
As well as the mini-town meeting.
The mini-town meeting's at seven, right?
Yeah.
So our select board meeting should be select board, sharing meeting with Finance. At six o'clock. And, no, we had six, I think that'll be plenty of time. Yeah, unless the, unless we end up with a ton of stuff in the, and then we can always push stuff if we need to, and, right?
Jeff, I might have created that, it might have been a typo that I made, cuz somebody else asked, was it the thirtieth, so. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, um.
Come on the twentieth, okay.
But regarding the budget, Jackie, do you wanna, you are working on the budget.
Yeah, I mean, the whole group is working on it.
With all of you guys, okay.
Yeah, I mean, Janet worked on really cleaning it up after, you know, Mike left, and putting all the details in. And then we met last week, the team, and came up with what our recommendations were, so they're all put there, and looked to see whether or not there were any challenges that we saw on. And then, um, I think the last thing was putting the expenditures in here today, and that was about it, so we closed it up, right, Janet?
Okay.
Janet, Avery? Yeah, it's pretty much safe.
Yes.
I shipped it off to Dave and Chris today, or last night, and said, where we're at, and that was just the expense side.
That, so the, what I heard from them is, um, some of the figures for, well, this is the warrant, um. He said. Well, I guess this is all about Warren. This is not touchscreen. My god. Alright, I thought I heard from him regarding that too, maybe that was a text, there's too many places, and now I'm gonna forget to text John Hoppy, cuz I have to cancel it up. Christopher, do you?
I just wanted to say that the whole team, with Dave, um, Kevin and Deb, you know, we just banged through it as quickly as we could on Friday, and just cleaned it all up.
And you feel good about it?
Feel pretty good about it.
He said.
Things that we need help with, like the water overhead.
Right, the indirect cost?
Yeah. So.
So.
Really cannot, we need guidance on that one.
So here's, let me read what Christopher just said, um, got the updated draft budget with FinCom, and plugged in a few more items, sent to draft warrant, um, he said, no need to panic on the budget warrant front. Um, and then give him a call later this week, and, um, there's some bigger decisions that we need to make to finalize things, so I'll give him a call, and then we can work on that. Um, as far as water goes, do you, does Finance feel different of, do you feel one, strongly one way or the other about what water is proposing, because when we go to the floor, I mean, if you don't agree with.
No, it's not that we don't agree, it's just that they, the water department put a, a certain amount in for their indirect costs.
Yeah.
What their indirect costs have been historically. And then, um, so we really don't have the information to make that decision without, I think Christopher could probably help us.
So are they, have they changed the, um, percentages that they're basing their indirect cost on?
I don't think so. Well, the previous TA wanted it to be enormous, right?
Yeah.
And I know the town water bills are also a consideration. Yes, I'm still holding them, they haven't been paid. We, didn't we say go ahead pay them with checks, I think we, no, they told me to stop.
Who?
Who?
Karen?
Because it's still being considered, they're, they're still considering trading against overhead, and they haven't made that decision yet, so they.
Oh, water?
And this, Mike was involved in this, and he just handed them back to me and said, just hold.
Yeah, that's the real challenge, right, this is where we were stumped too, because what happened was, is Mike had updated this spreadsheet to show the bills on, on the expenditure list.
Yeah.
Well, we don't normally do that in the budget, it's in the water side, so all we're really looking for is clarity, right, so we figured, we put it through the way it is, and talked to Christopher and, and Dave before it gets to the final, and make sure that we're all clear, right?
So I don't have a copy of the budget, I haven't seen a copy of the budget, I, okay, um, so without looking at it, I'm not really sure, how much has it changed since the last?
Well, they had put, we had put a, there was a thirty-two thousand dollar line item, right, on the.
And then it was forty-three.
Right.
So they went, so their indirect costs went up, okay, well, that's fine. Um. We just need to make sure it goes up at the amount that utilities and whatnot has gone up.
Right.
Okay.
So, but we can clear that, clarify and clear that all up before we come to the table on Memorial Day.
So I guess, did Karen put the budget together for them? Shaw?
We put it together.
So, we need to check with her and see what her, you know, formula was, I guess. Okay.
So that's, it, it's just a matter of following up.
Okay. But as far as water bills go, we've, we had decided that it made more sense for us to pay the water bills with checks.
I was told a long time ago, don't pay them, and I never heard anything after that.
We, I know we decided, we had that conversation, then, cuz you had said you were told not to, and we were on hold, and there was the conversation with Christopher, and then, I wanna say like two months ago? Three months ago, we said.
Not to pay it.
No, we said go for.
Not, cuz there was a controversy about the truck bill.
And I did put them through after that, Carrie, you said to me, yes, you're supposed to be paying them, I put them through, and they bounced all of them, and said, this is not set up yet, there's no money in that account. None. Well, I think we, we'll sit down with Christopher and get it up, so they, they'll give us some guidance as far as that, cuz that's always, I mean, that's been for decades, that's.
I just wanna get that figured out before we go into the next fiscal year, because that's, uh.
Well, wasn't part of it on something about office space rental too, or something?
That's the indirect cost.
That's, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, that, they wanted.
That was what was inserted in the budget at thirty-two thousand dollars above.
Okay, that's what, that gave for half, okay, I just remembered Mike talking about it one time, and I was like, wow, that seems crazy, but I didn't get a number, but.
That's what it was.
Okay, I, I just put it in the back of my head, something about the computer too, is it our computer, and they use it?
No, they.
Or they had just.
Well, the challenge we have is that there's a thirty-two thousand dollar plug in there, right?
Yeah.
And we don't have any backup to say, how did, how did this number come about?
This has been kept around for decades, so we're not gonna come up with a solution.
The thirty-two thousand that was there, there was a formula for each line item that was looking at the percentage of time that the accountant spent in the, using, doing water department work, the time that the tax collector, et cetera, so there was reasoning behind that.
I, I have no doubt.
So my question is, how have those percentages, have those percentages changed? Um, or is the forty-three just because, you know, we're looking at a larger total, and?
Well, I think in reality, just like Janet said, we need to talk to Christopher and say, how is this done without?
Yeah.
Alright, so, so I, I can give you a little input on that.
Thanks, Dave.
I'm Mr. Hudson.
Sorry, I've been, but I.
Dave, feel free to come up too, I, I just, I don't wanna invite the whole Finance Committee up, cuz then we're gonna be having a multi-meeting, and we can't do that, but.
So, so I, I talked, I talked to Chris today. Again, a couple of questions about the budget that we can talk about later, but the water department was, was pretty simple, he had reached an agreement with the water department that, because the offset had essentially doubled during COVID for various reasons, that instead of billing the, the town for the water, they gave us that, and then paid thirty-four thousand dollars and thirty-two thousand dollars into general fund for half of their costs.
So that's why we're not paying water bills.
So that's why we're not paying water bills. So when I saw on the budget that there was thirty-two thousand dollars, I think that Mike had put in for water bills, what that really was, was do we reach an agreement with the water department again, that that thirty-two thousand dollars is gratis, and then we only charge them thirty-four thousand dollars as
the rest of the, I didn't.
Okay, as long as that's clearly documented, cuz in the past, we tried to do that, and it wasn't clear, and it was just a nightmare. And then it was like, they thought the town owed them, and do you remember that period of time? Yeah, that's a good.
And, and bill, yes, I.
Yeah.
So, so that's, that's where we were on that, so we need to check with the water department, just see if they're willing to continue that agreement moving forward, or if we're gonna do a different offset.
And then I think we, whatever we just, if that's what we decide, then we need to have something, I don't know, do we need something written up by like Mark Rich or something that states that, and is?
I think moving forward would be a good idea to have something written up, so that.
Okay.
As people change in these different positions, there's something to, to look back on.
You got a record, yeah.
Yeah.
This is policy bingo, yep.
Okay. Alright.
No, that's.
Um, and other questions Christopher had, you, you guys feel like you can wrap up, is there anything you need from us, or?
It was, well, let's see, Dave, Dave, he had a question about if you, because of the change, and when he was looking at the fuel expenditures, I think we were low one, low last year.
Yeah, we, we kept it the same.
And, so, I understand that the per-caught gallon rate will come back sometime at the end of this month.
Uh. This month or next, yeah.
So that if you knew how many gallons you actually used in your fuel expenditures, you can multiply that by a new rate, and that would give us an accurate number for that, for the budgets. Now that might have.
I mean, I, I can hold a couple, yeah, but ask more.
Well, Christopher, you would have a record how many gallons you actually used, and then when you got the price per gallon on the per-caught contract, you'd be able to multiply that up and actually have a hard number for Finance. So that may have to be something that changes between next Monday and, and the actual town meeting, because per-caught hasn't done their number yet. I mean, I suppose you couldn't take and ask what per-caught thinks is going to be as great, who knows until they. But you must have given them how many gallons we.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
So you at least have that.
Alright, we touched a little bit on the warrant, um, we were wondering about Article seventeen to, um, uh, rescind the, a, a previous article, let me pull it up.
From the annual town meeting in twenty twenty.
Um, just what that was about, where it came from, um, to rescind Article uh, twenty by annual town meeting held on July twenty-second, twenty twenty?
What was?
The article was to see if the town will vote to borrow up to fifty thousand dollars to fund fiber optic drop construction and installation in connection with the construction and build out of the town's broadband system. The motion made and carried, and it carried unanimously, and is that somehow in contradiction to the broadband articles that are on the town warrant already for this year? Why are we doing this?
I don't know, I, the only thing, I think from the top of my head is we never actually borrowed that money to put the final insulation.
We have to rescind it.
So maybe that's a Peter Lankmore question, then?
Of whether we borrowed it.
Yeah.
I, I haven't seen the warrant, so.
Oh, oh, do you want me to send you what, um?
He was going to, so I.
I think he might have just, he sent this to me, you're on here, but he sent us to Verizon.net, that's not the right one, right? Is it the Gmail one you'd rather?
Well, that or the House and Air.
That's the one.
Conferent.
Oh, no, you didn't, let me forward it to you.
I, I've been, I've been about straight and lost.
No, that's alright, let me, I'll forward the other address, the Gmail one. But, so we were thinking that next week, we'll have our select board meeting at six, and we can go over the warrant a little bit more, and then we have the mini-town meeting at seven. And that way we'll be a little more confident in.
Okay, alright.
That's all of the articles. I can crop that off my list. And the, um, referendum about the term hike.
I personally don't think that's inappropriate, I mean, maybe if you wanna put it on town warrant, but it shouldn't be on the ballot at this point, coming up to a town meeting.
Yeah, so we could do it at a special town meeting with the fire, when we talk about fire policy. Remember we were saying the other day, we have to have a special town meeting anyways?
Well, it would make sense, I think. Well, it would make sense, I think, from educational perspective, have that person come back and do some kind of hearing with town and her findings, before we move on to actually having a town meeting and putting it on the warrant.
So I will have to let, I'll have to let Audrey know that. Um, that looks like Ms. Kena? Um, okay, do we have any other budget questions? Or feel pretty good on budget? Do I have any more warrant question? Not touch screens? Pretty small, Warren. Education, gateway regional, vocational education, transportation. Found treasure, but there's nothing.
We just wanna make sure all the standard articles are on there.
Yeah, there's nothing. Controversial on here at all, I don't know.
Yeah, just the borrowing money ones.
We don't have any bill things, I guess we need to put on there? There were no outstanding bills at that point? We'll do those in special.
I don't have any, no. They were done, yeah, they were done at the special town meeting. But give us time. Okay, always one that falls through the cracks.
Do you wanna um, update us on where we're at with the search committee, Jane, or?
Yep, so, we do have six people that have expressed an interest. We do have a number of applications, I, I was going back and forth to Jackie. One applicant that we had from Indeed so far is really not a, a solid applicant, so we'll see if I can get those. But we do have, I think, three, maybe four really solid people with, with some background. At this point, the six people that are comprising the selection committee, I've emailed them out questions. They've gotten back to me about new questions, about changes to questions, um, and about how to rate them. What we hope, what I hope to do is to have somebody, uh, two or three people for you to interview actually before the closing date. So we can kinda, maybe, be ready to hire somebody on the closing date, rather than start the interview process, which is like four days at that point. So everybody on, on this selection committee, Jackie's a new person on this selection committee.
Did um Nicole?
Nicole Davio. So the only response I didn't get in back one from Abby Bill.
And do you have any idea when you wanna do interviews? Have you thought about that yet, or?
So hopefully, probably by the, in the middle of the week, I will start doing reference checks on people that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Um, when I responded to them, I said, would you allow us to do reference checks before your interview? Because generally, they don't have to unless they're finalists. And so far, everybody has said, please, do that. So I'd like reference checks before we meet with the committee.
I'm getting antsy here. I was talking with Jackie earlier, uh, I don't know, today, yesterday, whatever, and uh the question is that we asked on an interview, they, they're pretty, I don't know, they're not really conclusive. You know, uh, they're more general, and I think that's where, uh, we're trying to make our, our mistake. Uh, they're not difficult questions, and I don't know how we can revise them or, or that, or is it too late to, or what?
No, so, so I think part of the problem in the past was, um, the questions, the select board asked, and the question selection and the answer are almost the same. Jackie's come up with a number of, of changes to how we ask those questions. Nicole's thrown in a couple of things, so I think the questions that we ask, and selection committee will be a little different. Knowing those questions, you may wanna look at other questions, because if the selection committee, six or seven people look through that and said, we think these people are qualified, given the questions, there's no need for you to ask the same questions. So at that point, you can come up with a whole different list of questions.
I had a couple that I had, just based on what we learned from last time, wanna put on this. So we can work on that when it gets time for um us to do it, and we'll see the questions that they've asked. Do we get to see the responses, or no, we don't get to see?
We, we don't.
We typically don't share that. So I think that's why we've had similar questions in the past, so that we can hear some of the responses.
But you can look at those questions that the selection committee asks, and then say, how can we dig deeper into that question, asking it a different way? Manner, and, and, you know, it's all we do as a selection committee, is none of our stuff it's all destroyed in the process, but people take notes in different manners for the questions they ask. It's just a general rating overall, are those people qualified and will afford, and what's going forward? And again, in the past, and I would suspect you want us to do that continuing, is, we'll move it for at least two names, cause you can't just one board, otherwise we've done the selection all the way. And we don't rank them for you. Because if we rank them in, and then you choose number three, we rank, you know. Because you have a different set of questions, you have different parameters, it's really not our purpose to rank them. It's our, our purpose to say, these people we feel are qualified to serve as town administrator. It's up to you to look through those finalists and say, alright, based upon whatever three of you decide, is, is the one you're gonna offer and then negotiate.
Now, did you do a scenario one last, you, you did a scenario question, right, where they take?
We did a couple of, couple of scenario questions that they actually gave a written response, which we could share with you. And if there's something that you would like to have a written response before, that you'd like us to use as part of this scenario, our, our screen, let me know, and we can add that. So I was, I was going to come up again with two or three questions that we sent out, that I prior to. Just because that's part of the selection process. And last time, it was really interesting, because you get a response back, and to me, anybody that misspells or has poor grammar, when you have a chance to do this without, under pressure time, it's just very telling.
I thought that was helpful last time, when we took a look at it, and I think that the candidate that we had all, really, that we had offered the job to initially last time, had a really good. Yeah, but we had read her response, I think that we had all liked that, that response, that was all our.
So, the same, the same process, and so again, if you have a question that you want, you know, to pre-answer, for us to use as a section committee.
Well, now, when, when you do the uh, uh, check the references, I know you have to be careful how you ask questions, because they're, they, they're liable for their answers. And uh, is there a way you can phrase a question like, you know, this guy worked for you, or this person worked for you, and if you had an opening, would you consider it? You know, cause that, that to me is, tells you something right away. If the answer is, oh yeah, in a heartbeat, you know, that, and then.
I think you can ask that question, right?
My, my go-to is, would you hire this person again?
Oh, it is, you, you're direct.
Yeah, that was, that's mine.
But you have to remember that the last section we went through, Ira did the reference checks. So, that's not, that's not gonna happen again.
We did not do them until after
Right.
we had done the interviews and offered a position.
Correct, yeah.
So now we'll have that done before offering.
That's a little backward.
Yeah, that was a little backward, so, you'll learn.
So, yes, I understand, I, I have done a couple of reference checks.
Okay, well, it sounds like everything's moving along. Um, I just keep, I started a list, I even, I think I emailed you guys, um, I don't know if I included you, Dave, but just, um, things that I was concerned about falling through the gap um, in this time period. Um, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, Watson Park and um bicentennial bids have not been put out. And that's like a, a priority, because um, obviously springtime's coming, so I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, but we need to get um, some work started. Um, just trying to keep track of some major items that might slip through because of this weird time period. But if you think of anything else, if anyone thinks of anything else, um, send an email, and we'll start that list. I was gonna try to take a look at the list that Chris had left, and see if we could update that, and see where we are in some of those projects. And then have something to give the next person that starts, that's a little bit more up to date. I would imagine that a lot of those things need to be, or just where they were, we just probably need. Okay, thank you. So I guess we'll meet next week and look at the warrant first a little bit closer and.
Yeah, because I think depending on the revenue side, you may wanna change some of the warrant.
Okay, so it should be a pretty quick annual town meeting, it looks like. Right? Am I gonna jinx it? Am I jinxing?
It's always so hard predict, because sometimes the simplest thing comes the longest.
We've seen that many times.
Alright. Okay, we do have an executive session. Motion to, oh, adjourn at seven oh two.
I don't, if, if Chris has questions, he's gonna reach out.
We haven't, just haven't gotten there yet. We will, we just haven't gotten there yet, I just adjourned us. Oh, no, I didn't adjourn us. You didn't, thank you. Um, so motion to go into the second session to discuss uh, according to GLC thirty A, section twenty-one issue in preparation for negotiations. Session, contract agreements, just not need personnel. And you say yes? To not to reconvene.